Certificate of Closed Meeting Number 18-19-9 for the closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Boyd, second by Ms. Palmeroy. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Mrs. Palmeroy?
Yes.
Okay, and the time is 7:34. Okay, um, next item is approval of agenda.
I recommend that the board approve the agenda with changes. You were going to pull.
Okay, and I, um, may I get a motion to amend? Well, first let's have a approval of the superintendent's recommendation.
So moved.
Okay, so can someone move to amend the motion so that we can remove the item on the agenda related to the increases for?
Eight B.
Eight B, okay.
Okay. I'm making a motion to remove item eight B, compensation structure for teachers who exceed standard student class size, to table that for the next meeting. May I?
Second.
Second? Okay, it's been moved to approve the agenda and amend the agenda by Ms. Palmeroy, and it was second by Ms. Boyd. Is that what we did? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, the next item is approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of the school board held on January 15, 2019?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Boyd, second by Ms. Holmes, to approve the work session minutes of January 15th. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes. Um, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 15, 2019 regular school board meeting?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Boyd, second by Ms. Palmeroy, to approve the minutes of the January 15, 2019 regular school board meeting. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, now we come to the favorite part of the meeting, recognitions. We will start with the word of the month, Open-Minded, to be presented by Lafayette Upper Elementary School.
Thank you.
Mr. Terry.
Good evening, Chairwoman Kay, school board members, Dr. Melton, all our wonderful guests and scholars today. I want to thank all our families for coming and bringing our great scholars. In the spirit of celebrating school board word of the month for February open-mindedness, our legendary Mrs. Hankerson got together with her performing arts scholars and let them decide this time what they wanted to do for our presentation tonight. So these are the all-student-driven ideas that were able to come out in the classroom, and they will present it, be presented tonight in the order of grades five, and fourth, and then third. The fifth graders tonight created a skit. The fourth graders developed the idea of inclusiveness, and the third graders created new words for our school song to fit our presentation tonight. We hope you enjoy it. Here they are.
We shall present a skit which demonstrates a parent being open-minded when her child brings home a bad grade. Mary Claire is the teacher. Elijah and Taylor are the scholars. And Elizabeth is the parent. My name is Liam. I'm a teenager. Good job, Elijah. Try harder next time, Taylor. I've got a better grade than you. Taylor got a bad grade. Good job, Elijah. I'm proud of your work. I'm a little disappointed about this grade, Taylor, but I shall try to be open-minded this time. Please try to study harder next time so you can perform your next test. America is often called melted pie because many of us are from different countries. We show that we are open-minded when we try to accept people from different cultures. Tonight, we will share five different languages: English, Spanish, French, Bedai, Percy, and English. We are open-minded because we are world citizens. We are open-minded because we are world citizens. Lafayette Lions, we are proud to be. Lafayette Lions, open-minded are we. We respect colors and property. Lafayette Lions show responsibility. Lafayette Lions soldier open-mindedly. Lafayette Lions are learning badly. Scholars are principled, caring, and cool at Lafayette Upper Elementary School. Lafayette Lions rule!
That was a wonderful job. Thank you to everyone who participated, and I just want to thank the parents for bringing them out tonight. And we do need to give it up for Mrs. Hankerson because she's such a great leader with these children.
Absolutely.
This is her last school board presentation. She will be retiring after forty-three years. Forty-five years. Sorry.
Okay, next item is Fredericksburg City School Board Members Appreciation Month in Virginia. Ms. Catlett, please let's give those open-minded Lafayette Lions another hand. Great job. Good evening, Chairperson Kay, Superintendent Melton, school board members, colleagues, students, family and friends. Fredericksburg City will join 132 other school divisions throughout the state to celebrate School Board Appreciation Month in February. Almost 850 elected and appointed school board members throughout Virginia will be recognized by schools and communities for their service and dedication to public education. Board members devote countless hours to attending training programs and working with special projects in our division. The foundation of school leadership is ensuring equal learning opportunities for all students. We're proud of our division, and School Board Appreciation Month is the time to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments of our elected trustees. I will now read the governor's proclamation. School Board Appreciation Month: Whereas the education of Virginia's school-aged children is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual strength of our Commonwealth is built, and whereas locally elected and appointed school board members play an important role in our representative democracy as the decisions of local school boards directly influence instruction in Virginia's public schools, and whereas the leadership of our school boards affect the development and future of our children and ensures that students are prepared to compete in local, state, national, and global economies, and whereas local school boards devote themselves to providing a high-quality education for all students in the Commonwealth, and whereas this year's theme, Leading for Success, reflects the top priority of local school board members as they advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders, and whereas school board members work with parents, businesses, education professionals, and other community members to create and sustain an educational vision for our students, and whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia is proud of our education system and appreciates the efforts of local school board members to make Virginia public school system an excellent place in which to educate our youth, and whereas School Board Appreciation Month recognizes school board members for their leadership and support of a public school system for which the entire Commonwealth benefits, we do hereby recognize February 2019 as School Board Appreciation Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Please join me in thanking and recognizing our great school board. Thank you for your outstanding service. We appreciate everything that you do.
I hope it didn't break.
We will now have the School Board Clerk's Appreciation Week presentation, and I have the privilege of presenting Ms. Wright under the clerk's presentation. So, we brought you a little gift. It's little, but it's really big, as a show of appreciation, and I get to read the proclamation. Whereas, school board clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas, school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board, a record of all receipts and disbursements, and a record of all official acts, and whereas, school board clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school business of his/her county or city as may be required by the school board, and whereas, school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media on behalf of the school board and superintendent, and whereas, school board clerks and the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings, and whereas, school board clerks join with school boards to help ensure that students achieve to their highest potential, and whereas, school board clerks provide an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents, the V S B A Board of Directors does hereby recognize the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and whereas, the Fredericksburg City Public School Board joins the V S B A in recognizing the many and varied contributions of school board clerks, now therefore be it resolved that at its meeting on the fourth day of February, the Fredericksburg City Public School Board also recognizes the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. Thank you very much, Ms. Wright. And we also want to take a few minutes to recognize the School Board Clerk's assistant, Ms. Rebecca Christopher, for all the work that she does as well. Okay, uh, school board, let's, oh, school, uh, school principals' month.
Week.
Oh, is it week? They don't deserve it. Carry on, Mr. Tom.
Madam Chair Kay, board members, Dr. Melton, colleagues, friends, families, good evening. The governor recently declared Virginia Principals Appreciation Week in honor of our school leaders. At this time, I'd like to take an opportunity to share his proclamation with all our assembled guests. Whereas, school principals work cooperatively to direct, develop, and inspire all members of the staff, student body, to communicate effectively with parents and to engage them in the learning process, whereas principals serve as the educational leaders responsible for managing policies, regulations, procedures necessary to ensure a safe and effective learning environment for all students in Virginia's public and private schools, whereas, principals and teachers are entrusted with the opportunity and responsibility of guiding, directing, nurturing, and mentoring, and imparting knowledge to our students while they're in school, and whereas principals work collaboratively with teachers, students, staff, and the community at large to proactively prepare our students to become self-directed and productive citizens, and whereas Virginia School Principal Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work of Virginia school principals and to recognize the importance of principals in ensuring that every child has access to a quality education. This time, I'd like to call our principals to the desk one at a time to receive their recognition and certificate of appreciation. First, I'd like to call up Principal Marjorie Tankersley. Mrs. Tankersley is principal of Hugh Mercer Elementary School. Mr. Terry is principal of Lafayette Upper Elementary School. Mr. Justin Woodside. Mr. Woodside is the principal of Walker Grant Middle School. Dr. Tanisha Rochelle. Dr. Rochelle is principal of James Monroe High School. I'd like to publicly express our thanks and appreciation to all of our principals for their tireless work to operate and inspire our schools.
Good evening, Chairperson Rollins Kay, school board members, Dr. Melton, and families. The faculty members are asked to nominate a member of the senior class for recognition as the Optimist Club Student of the Month. The purpose of the award is to recognize students for their efforts in arts, athletics, academics, and community service work. I am pleased to recognize the following senior who was selected for the month of January: William Rowe, son of Ms. Jennifer Rowe.
On behalf of the board, I would like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. At this time, we will take a brief pause for anyone who wishes to leave. Brief, brief pause. Home.
They are, but no, they're engraved with our names. I had Jarvis's. Jarvis said yours. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is hearing of citizens. We have received a request from two individuals who wish to address the board, Ms. Barbara Powell and Ms. Whitney Keet, is it? We ask that speakers give your name and address for our records and that your comments be kept to three minutes. The timer will alert you when there are thirty seconds remaining in order that you can sum up your remarks.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Powell. I live at 1,005 Oakwood Court in the Great Oaks subdivision, 22401.
Great, thank you. You may begin.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and Dr. Melton, and distinguished school board members. My name is Barbara Powell. I'm the choral music teacher at Walker Grant Middle School. This is my eleventh year teaching here in Fredericksburg City. I'm one of the teachers whose classes are affected by overcrowding, and therefore, I'm currently teaching more students than the state regulations say it is legal for me to teach. Since I teach choral music, state regs allow for me to have a maximum of up to 200 students. I'm currently teaching 221. It was as high as 226 or 7 earlier this year. That means I'm carrying an extra load of grading and planning and classroom management and individual student needs in my job this year. It's a load that I didn't ask for. It was not discussed with me ahead of time. To add what amounts to an additional class to an already large teaching load has put a lot of stress on me. I've spoken with my building-level administration about my schedule specifically and the many challenges that it carries, really starting as early as the second week of this school year. When I found out about the state regulations, I went back to my admin team for advice and was asked to contact the human resources at the central office. I've spent a great deal of time this fall and winter trying to get information from central office in regards to this problem. I've sent emails and made phone calls. Eventually, I had a meeting with Dr. Russ and my V E A representative to discuss the matter. So here's what I'd like to ask you to consider as you prepare to vote, I guess not tonight, but later on in the future. The amount of money proposed currently does not reflect the amount of extra work that is being done in regards to handling the needs and education of extra students. If we consider the group of 21 students that I have over and above my normal load to be an extra class, then we will see the main thrust of the problem. In middle and high school, when the number of students needing a certain class are too high, a teacher might be asked to give up his or her planning to teach an additional block. Based on my salary and the 45-minute blocks that I teach, if I was asked to take an additional class of those 21 students, I would be paid somewhere in the neighborhood of $4,500 extra in my salary. The proposed chart recommends $1,291. If my colleagues at Walker Grant who are teaching as many as 90 extra students were to be paid for the three to four extra teaching blocks that that equates to, it could cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $12,000 or more depending on their salaries, not the $3,000 that the proposed chart recommends. If the school division had to hire additional staff to fill the needs at our schools that are being covered by the 14 or 15 of us who are currently doing this extra work, the amount of cost to the division in salary and benefits would be huge. I feel like we are the ones who are doing our administrators and our students a big favor by taking on extra work, but I'm concerned that the extra work we're doing seems comparatively worth so little. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. I appreciate all of you.
My name is Whitney Kit, and I live at 426 Morningside Drive, Fredericksburg, Virginia, 22401. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Melton, and distinguished school board members. My name is Whitney Kit, and I have been teaching history at James Monroe for three years, living in Fredericksburg, for six years in Ward III. I currently teach 153 students over six sections, and the district's compensation proposal of $1,046 annually for teaching between 151, sorry, and 159 students additional is not enough. Other teachers in the building have less than 150 students but were offered the opportunity to teach another section for substantially more money. There are currently 300 students enrolled in World History II. Another teacher and myself are the only teachers who teach World History II at this time. Split between the two of us, that would be 150 students total. 300 students should warrant 10 sections of World History II instead of nine. One of us should have been offered an extra section, or the guidance department should have leveled the courses appropriately. There are, for example, there are math teachers in the building who receive a percentage of their salary for teaching extra sections that are less than 150 students or close to only four more students than I teach. Given the choice of having the extra students or receiving the money that the division has offered, I would have chosen not to receive the extra students. The amount of time and energy it takes to even have three more students, especially at James Monroe with an 18-grade minimum per quarter, is substantial. It impacts my family and time that I like to dedicate to other things at the high school that I volunteer for. It cannot be justified that teachers have between four and 32 students in a class at James Monroe and be responsible for the same amount of assignments. The huge disparity between class sizes and total roster numbers is problematic. This is an example of how even three students creates a much larger workload. I understand that it can be difficult to determine a pay scale or what compensation is necessary for students over the legal limit, which is why it was beneficial that human resources met with the V E A representative and another teacher, Ms. Powell, impacted by the issue. However, in the meeting, the V E A proposed that the tiered compensation scale begin at $2,000 per year, to be evenly divided at the end of each semester. It was my understanding that the V E A's proposal was where the compensation plan would start, but after reviewing the agenda for this upcoming meeting, the district has once again changed the number to a lower amount to start the scale at $1,046, so $523 a semester. Please consider the V E A's proposal for the tier compensation plan to begin at $2,000. Teachers should not be penalized and then undercut because of a division error. What's most frustrating is that we were not given a choice. We have taken on this extra caseload without having a choice between compensation and our time and energy. There has been very little transparency regarding this issue. We work diligently for the division and deserve to be appropriately compensated.
I'm sorry. The time's up. Thank you. Now we come to the consent agenda. May I have a recommendation?
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as presented with the following items: Head start approvals and the James Monroe High School Decatur request.
May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Holmes, second by Ms. Boyd. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Action items, beginning with personnel. Do we have a recommendation?
I recommend the board approve the personnel schedules, including the addendum information shown as of February 4, 2019.
May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Boyd, second by Ms. Palmeroy. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Palmeroy?
Yes.
Right. Motion carries. I believe the next item is Fredericksburg City Schools' Facility Expansion Strategy.
As you are aware, we have been working with Mosley Architects and with Citi to develop a long-range plan for expansion of our schools to meet the growing enrollment that we've seen over the last 10 years or more. Mosley was commissioned to put together options for the school board and city council to consider. And there were a number of options that we looked at. At the same time, as the Board knows, we have a working group that includes two school board members, two city council members, and members of the staff of each entity. That group has met and considered the attached strategy. And we feel, Mr. Broody, who's present tonight, and Mr. Kelly as well, feel that this is the best plan that we have for moving forward. We will be able to address the overcrowded conditions at Hugh Mercer by expanding Lafayette. That project and process would begin July 1, 2019 and be completed in time for the 2021 school year. It's our recommendation, and I believe that the working group agreed with this as well, that we, in order to plan long-term, that we approve this strategy.
Thank you, Dr. Melton. May I have a motion for the superintendent's recommendation?
Still moved.
Moved by Ms. Ream, second by Mr. Bailey. Is there any discussion?
So I'm still not 100% on board with the idea of doing an expansion at Lafayette. It just seems like we're building onto a school and we're not going to get the amount of space that we need in that build. From what Mosley said, it sounds like we're going to be at capacity the moment it opens, it opens first. So I'm just not sure that that's...
I think that what convinced me was the sincerity of council and a feeling that they were going to help us regardless, recognizing that based on finances, this is what they need to provide at this time. But, you know, we had extensive conversation. And for me to even be speaking about it means that I had to have been convinced because, you know, for me, it's been new school, new school, promises, promises, promises. But I also recognize economics and I understand it. And while we need something, they presented it in a way that they would address that new school. It's not like it's off the table. It is still on the table, which is why I was comfortable.
For that reason, in the documentation that we were given, it lists the cost of the proposal and that's over a long period of time. For the record, and as a citizen of the city, can we state roughly what the cost of a new school would be if we did that rather than this extended over time?
What the cost of the school would be?
Of what a new school would be?
Currently.
Currently.
In 2020.
Yes.
About 32 million.
So, and I understand economics. I understand we have what we can do, what we can do right now. However, it's very short-sighted to not look at over time how much we would be spending compared to what it would cost today. So it is what it is, but I just would like that to be on the record.
There's one other question that I have about the Mosley report that came out. And I know that they addressed this when they spoke to us and to the city council a couple of months ago. But in the numbers, the projected numbers and the actual numbers that they have listed on that chart in here, they don't put the VPI kids in that number. So there's 1,000 kids at Hugh Mercer right now. But on that chart, it looks like there's only 921.
Which, as we were going through that presentation, and you'll hear us tonight, you'll see tonight that we have 921 because that's your kindergarten, but we will also mention the fact that I think there are 68 students.
Because they're not going anywhere, right? I mean, they're staying in that building. So we need to count them and we need the community to know that those children are there and that that school is at capacity. I mean, I just feel like we're doing ourselves a disservice by not, you know, letting the community know that those numbers are there.
Any other comments?
Okay, then I will call for the vote. All in favor? Aye. All not in favor? Nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it. Then the vote passes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is information items.
Student achievement, February update.
Good evening. Tonight, Mrs. Walsh and I will focus the student achievement presentation on the academic review process. But before we get started with that, I did want to give you a brief follow-up about the graduation and dropout information that we gave last month or a couple of weeks ago now. First, there are four students that have been changed from dropouts at James Monroe to being coded as home instruction. So we've been able to contact those and get all of those students in compliance with home instruction. So they will not be included in the dropout rate for James Monroe. There are six students registered to take at least one part of the GED at this time. A couple of weeks ago, it was just two. It's important to note that 76% of the students that are currently on the James Monroe dropout list are, from the cohorts of 2018 to 2021, are English learners. And so with that concern in mind, Dr. Thomas meets with the families of L students who register during their high school years. During this meeting, Dr. Thomas and the families discuss the goals of the family for their child's education and the best plan for the student because some families express that they may not be in search of a diploma. Instead, they're just looking to gain a functional command of English. For these older students, it may be most advantageous for them to earn a GED since it is unlikely that they will have time to complete the high school diploma requirements before reaching the age of 21. So these conversations at the time of registration with Dr. Thomas ensure that the student is on the best path for their goals. And we will continue to provide you updates each month on the dropout and the graduation rates. So on to tonight's presentation. As you know, the academic review process is an improvement measure required by the Virginia Department of Education based on factors considered for accreditation. Tonight, Mrs. Walsh and I want to be sure that you understand where each of the schools fall within these indicators, what the VDOE requirements are related to those indicators, as well as Fredericksburg's plan and the timeline for the schools. First, as you know, all of the schools in our division are accredited for 2018, 2019 based upon the three-year waiver from DOE. This waiver allows a school to be accredited for one year if it was accredited for the three previous consecutive years. However, these charts show the school achievement scores based on the 2017 standards of accreditation, not based on that three-year waiver. The green indicates that the school is meeting the benchmark. Yellow areas show the school is approaching the benchmark and red reflects an area in need of improvement. All of our schools are successful in the overall academic achievement of students. However, there are three areas of concern from the high school. Those are math achievement gaps between subgroups, dropout rate, and graduation rate. And then there are two areas from Walker Grant, Lafayette, and Hugh Mercer. These schools have challenges in both English and math achievement groups. Therefore, under the 2017 accreditation requirements, all four schools would be accredited with conditions if we had not qualified for the waiver. And so let's talk about the ramification of that. The portion of the 2017 standards of accreditation addressing improvement are presented to you here. This guidance basically says that the schools with a yellow ranking for math or English and overall student performance must undergo an academic review. However, all of our schools have green ratings in the all-student achievement. So the Level 2 doesn't apply. However, the guidance goes on to say that any school having a red indicator in any category is a Level 3 and must undergo academic review. Because each of our schools has at least one red indicator, we would be under academic review at each school. However, this year, there are two scenarios for flexibility. If a school is accredited under the three-year waiver but still identified for academic review. The first scenario is that the school is identified for academic review but is accredited if we use the old accreditation formula. So if we figured out the 2015 accreditation status, if a school would be accredited under that, they fit under the first scenario. Schools meeting this criteria need to affirm that they have school improvement plans in place for this year to address those areas and must submit this information to the state. The second scenario speaks to schools that are under the three-year waiver but don't meet benchmark expectations under the old formula system nor under the new formula system. These schools are required to go through a formal academic review but may choose to do the process internally using the VDOE resources or have it conducted by the VDOE staff. James Monroe, Lafayette, and Hugh Mercer fall under Scenario 1 because they would have been accredited under the old standards. Therefore, VDOE only requires that they follow a school improvement plan and provide affirmation to the state. Walker Grant, however, would not be fully accredited without the waiver, so they must undergo academic review either internally or through the VDOE. It's important to note, however, that these flexibility options may not be extended into next year. And because of this uncertainty, we have elected to undergo an internal review at all schools. However, the process will be less arduous for the three schools that are under Scenario 1. And so now Mrs. Walsh is going to explain how our division is choosing to approve our alignment with this process.
Thank you, Mrs. Brighty. Just like Ms. Brighty had said, since all of our schools would be accredited with conditions under the new standards of accreditation without those flexibility scenarios and we believe in continuous improvement, we have elected to undergo an internal review of all of our schools. While Walker Grant will meet the requirements of the formal VDOE academic review process, the other schools will undergo the process only in areas that were red and yellow. Specifically, James Monroe will focus on special education achievement in English and all-student achievement in Algebra II. As we presented at last month's board meeting, there are already specific plans in place for graduation dropout rates. Hugh Mercer and Lafayette will focus on all-student achievement in reading, math, and science as well as individual student growth for special education students in reading and math. We believe in using a team of former FCPS educators for this school alignment process and they will assist with the vertical articulation and narrow the focus of support systems across our division as well as we meet the requirements of the standards of accreditation. So there is four components of this academic review or school alignment process. The four categories that are assessed, you can see they're on the slide. Under leadership component, the review team is going to look for evidence that shows the principal provides guidance and feedback to teachers regarding expectations for implementing the written and taught curriculum. Regarding curriculum, the team will review lesson plans and make sure that they are aligned with state expectations, including a variety of resources and experiences for students as well as formative and summative assessments to guide and evaluate instruction. The master schedule and staffing are also going to be considered. And then under professional development, the team is looking to see that relevant opportunities are provided to teachers for their professional growth, including time for monitoring, reflecting, and connecting to student outcomes. The final category, achievement gaps, which is one of the largest ones for all of our schools, establishes whether or not the school has high expectations for all students, rewards positive behaviors, fosters family and community engagement, as well as providing equitable experiences to all students to apply academic and technical knowledge related to college career and life. Schools will provide evidence in each of these categories of their focus areas and the review team will use rubrics provided by the VDOE to provide feedback to each school. Any area that is not termed as full implementation will be addressed in the school improvement plans for the future. We have established a six-month timeline for this process that you can see on the slide in front of you. We've already received training from the VDOE and have trained the building admin as well as the central office liaisons in this process. The review team has been confirmed for the week of February 25 through March 1. That's been designated Evidence Review Week. The team will provide feedback to be shared with central office and school admin teams in March and an update will be provided to the school board in April. We hope to be able to share from a division's perspective our areas of strength that are found and also our areas for improvement that would drive future school improvement plans and the comprehensive plan moving forward. The review team is Sylvia Johnson, Mr. Robert Birch, Ms. Pam Steinke-Nigg, Ms. Shirley Cordell Robinson, and Mr. Denny Kefir. We appreciate the time that these former Fredericksburg educators are willing to provide for us through this process and are excited to gain their valuable feedback. Finally, just as always, we will be continuing to update the Board aligned with your Board goals. For March, we're looking at providing an update for you on an equity at risk plan that we have in the works. And then obviously, in April, we'll be giving you an update on the academic review process and the results of that. And at this time, if you have any questions, Ms. Brighty and I would love to answer those.
I have a question. Do you plan in your assessment to look at the, how critical either the school improvement plans or the gaps that you see, the issues that you see, how that's tied to the budget and any budget shortfalls or any requests?
I don't recall seeing anything in the VDOE paperwork that talks about any type of budgetary request except that we take the allocations that we are provided and distribute them appropriately. But as far as whether or not we are receiving enough,
Right.
that's not looked at through this process.
We would categorize this as another unfunded mandate.
Right.
Sure, sure. I just think this could be critical to be able to see specifically how our continued budget shortfalls are directly impacting the achievement.
Well, you're looking at two right here.
Yeah.
People that have had to take on additional
Right.
responsibilities to work through this whole school improvement process and are leading these teams and training these teams in addition to the other full-time jobs that they have.
Yeah, the only artifact that we were able to even come close to that would be the artifact about equitable resources. That was it.
Okay.
Dr. Thomas, when you meet, you meet with the English language learners?
Yes.
When you meet with them and the students and families are saying that they are not interested in diploma, what, how do we triage them? Do we have a pathway for them? What happens to those students?
Well, dude though, this is, I'm on a fact-finding discovery process this year with this. I have tried to partner with the high school in terms of examining why the graduation and the dropout rate are, the dropout rate is so high. One of the things that I'm finding is that we're getting lots of students that have been reported in the news from these South American countries that are fleeing violence. We, so right now, what I'm doing is when the counseling department has a registration conference with students, L students, 16 or older, I sit in and try to find out what is the, why are they arriving here? And so lots of students have indicated... And so, lots of students have indicated they're arriving from Venezuela, Honduras, El Salvador, and they're seeking sanctuary, a safe place to be, as is what's reported in the news. And many of the kids are indicating that, to be frank, they want to develop some command of the language so that they can become employed and get a job and be able to feed their families. And so, a diploma, that's like a long-term goal that many of them don't really see the value. They're looking at the value of being able to obtain funding, to send back home to their families and to support their families, their family members that are here. So, that -- those are the dynamics that we are competing against. So, oftentimes, when Ls come in, they have to sit in ESO classes to develop language proficiency, and so, that can often extend their time in high school. Ls are provided the opportunity to complete a degree through the age of 22, which is beyond what normal students are able to -- that normal students have. So, that -- those are the dynamics that we're seeing. So, we're trying to provide an opportunity to give them some credential, a GED, and through this process, we're able to hopefully have them exit the GED program in a matter of months, but at the same time, not having a negative effect on our graduation rate. Getting a GED, you don't receive the full 100% points, if I'm correct. Mrs. Brighty, you receive 75 points, but too many of the kids are seeking to drop out.
I like that approach.
I will say this, that Dr. Rocha and her staff, Dr. Thomas, and the instructional team, they're -- we're not looking at a group of students as dropouts. We're looking at each individual student and trying to make plans for those individual students. We talked about a number of strategies this morning in our meeting about how we can get to these students, how we can reach out, get them back into school, and if they don't want a diploma, get them into GED or some other kind of program. I mean, we can't make them get diplomas if that's not what they want to do, but we can help them to get where they want to be so they don't count as a full dropout against us.
Also, I mean, 75 points or 100 points are counting as a dropout. I mean, the bigger issue to me is that they're going to be able to be more full members of society and provide -- you know, they're going to have a much better outcome personally if they get a GED or a diploma than if they don't. We had also talked at one point about doing flexible scheduling for some of these students. Is that still something that we're looking at? Where they didn't have to take like a full course load? You know what I'm talking about?
We're going to continue to look at that. We're not doing that with any now, but yes, that's on the table as well.
Sometimes, you know, if they could work in the morning and...
We have some that are coming in the evening.
Right. The JM Star's GED program, we started this year, and it's an evening program. So, it runs twice a week from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So, many of the kids that have indicated that they were essentially considering dropping out, we've transitioned those kids into the evening program so that way, they can have a job which addresses the financial need for their families, but at the same time, help them to continue to progress towards some type of credential, at least a GED.
Good.
All right, thank you. Monthly financial report, Mr. Baker?
Good evening, Chairperson Kay. What you have before you right now is the December 31st year-to-date monthly financial report. I'll say that there are no big surprises. We're staying within budget currently. I will say, in looking at the funding for next year, if that was presented in this in some way, there's one number, it's foster care, and it seems to be decreasing in the FY '20 budget based on the governor's proposed budget. So, I don't know if there's a piece missing there or if they're trying to re-engineer the funding, but that's one thing that's caught my eye. While it's not a huge pot of money, I'm a little concerned about it. Also, just to keep you abreast of what's going on with the conversion to the new accounting package, we're in the process of transferring the year-to-date activity from the old accounting system to the new MUNIS program. If everything goes well, the next monthly report like this should be in the new account structure. So, that will also include the fund balance supplemental appropriation that you guys took action on at a prior meeting to bring that forward. So, this new format will be very similar to the budget that you're looking at. And going forward, I wanted this budget presentation to have the old and new accounts. I wanted this to be a historical document available in board docs and to everyone so that they could try to map from the old to the new. I will tell you that it's not a one-for-one correspondence, so you may have three old accounts rolling into one new or one new account that is actually -- or an old account that's split up into maybe three new accounts because we're realigning the way we look at the budget while we're correcting some old accounting problems. And so, this budget, I don't want to apologize because we had to get all these numbers in on these sheets, but they're tiny. I know, I use my reading glasses all the time. Going forward, we'll present this in the new format, and that's what everybody's getting used to in the field right now. So, right now, accounts payable is completely converted to the new account code. HR and payroll will convert over later in the year. So, we're going to be in that transition for a while, and I just wanted you to know why there's so much -- there's so many numbers on one page. It's a lot to get a handle on. Are there any specific questions about the finance report or any questions about the format or no? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Superintendent's proposed 2019-20 school division operating budget, special revenue fund budgets, grants, and the capital improvement program.
We have a PowerPoint to guide you through tonight's discussion. There we go. To say that this budget is a challenge is a $2.125 million understatement. What we're going to do tonight is to provide you with an overview of our budget, of the superintendent's proposed budget. Again, touch on enrollment growth, building capacity, and class size. A justification of the items in the operating budget. Talk a little bit about what the challenges are if we don't address those needs. List our priorities and talk about looking forward to the out years. With that, I will turn over the first part here to Mr. Baker.
Okay, I don't want to read verbatim, but what we're proposing is $47,974,568 for the operating budget, and that's also considered Fund II of V when you're looking through the budget document. About $3.3 million increase or 7.5% from the current approved budget and adopted budget. And we've laid out the biggest ticket items. The salary increases are about almost a million and a half. The new positions, and when you count them, regardless of what the position is, we count that as whether it's a full-time position or not, is about $1.8 million. The health insurance increase is about 12%, and I've been in contact with our representative at the local choice, which is a state anthem product, and they said they don't have any further information available yet. They're going through all their calculations to rerate everyone, and they said 12% is still a good number to put in there as a placeholder. Non-personnel costs are about $22,000, and the reason that's low, because it would be higher, is that we plan on using fund balance and turnover possibly to help, and you may see that in another slide where that's explained a little more. This all comes to about $3.3 million. The increase in the state funding is not insignificant. It's $1,222,000. And out of that, about $440,000, $50,000 is allocated for salary increases, and that was from the governor's proposal to move all teachers in the state up. So, the three things as usual, the most significant drivers are the positions. You heard about the classrooms earlier, and we're just trying to address some of that. The enrollment growth, which is driving up class sizes, and then, the health insurance, which is never insignificant. And I'll remind you that in the past few years, we've had to place either an even or more than even amount back on the employees to cover the health insurance increase.
As Mr. Baker mentioned, one of the big drivers for this budget and every budget we have is the growth in Fredericksburg, beginning with growth in students, which leads to the growth in the number of teachers we need. Since 2009, and we have the specific number of 2,993 students, since 2009, we have increased our student enrollment to the number in 2018 by 19%. Those numbers in the green box in red are actual numbers. The numbers beyond those years are anticipated. And if you look to the table, look at the table to the right, those are 2018, 19 actual enrollment numbers. As was mentioned earlier tonight, the 928 students listed at Hugh Mercer, those are K through 2 students. There are additional 60-plus, 68 four-year-olds in the VPI program. So, it is quickly approaching 1,000 students. And of course, Lafayette, 846, Walker Grant, 768, and James Monroe is 1,010.
Okay, on your next slide, we have a peer summary. And on the left side, we're looking at enrollment and the percentage of low income in local composite index. One of the previous meetings, we had Dr. Melton mention the low income, and there are localities that don't have as low an income, but they're treated better in the local composite index. And to just remind you, not go into a lot of details, but the local composite index is a way of assessing how each locality can pay for education, and it really looks at population, adjusted gross income, sales tax, and real estate values. They compare that at a local level to the state as a whole. On the right, we have some numbers just to show the surrounding counties, Spotsylvania, Stafford. And you can see this total state funding. So, in a sense, Spotsylvania and Stafford may come out very well off based on the current funding the governor's proposing because they have such a low composite index. Their composite index runs .34 to .36 while ours is .62 right now. And we also wanted to show the funding per pupil because years ago, when I first came here, you could plan on about $2,500 a student, but the funding has gone up by the state. We're at about $4,700 a student when you consider all sources of revenue from the state, whereas Spotsylvania and Stafford actually pick up, you know, quite a few more dollars per student, and that's all geared towards that composite index and how well it treats your -- or looks at your locality to determine your ability to pay for education. Thank you.
The next slide shows some significant areas where growth is affecting our teaching and learning. For instance, if you look at James Monroe, we have 75 sections that have 26 students or more. 28 sections have 30 students or more. Seven teachers are teaching over the recommended capacity that two of our teachers spoke about this evening, and we have 10 teachers that are teaching at least one additional class. When this happens, when a teacher is teaching one additional class, yes, they are compensated, but their planning period is gone. So, it is a recipe for burnout for sure. And at Walker Grant, some of the same. We have 60 sections that have 26 students or more on the roster. 21 of those sections have 30 or more. Eight teachers are teaching more than their recommended case student load, and we have three teachers teaching an additional class there. Looking to the right, these are projected ratios for next year based on actual students we have this year. Now, kindergarten, of course, is a guesstimate. We're basing that on 300 students. Our students this year, I think we're at 351, so the 300 we're projecting could very well be much higher than that. And you see the rest of those ratios. The one that sticks out that will have to be addressed is the first grade at 23 to 1. If you remember, we receive a classroom reduction grant that says we have to have 22 students or less in each individual classroom, so that's something we will have to address. And that's a ratio. So, 23 to 1 means each class, and I think this year, Ms. Tinkus, you have 15 first-grade classes? So, each one of those classes, we'll be averaging one over with the numbers that we have currently.
Okay, going over the justification of the total operating budget, as I said earlier, the 5% salary increase comes out to about a million and a half. We've listed the reasons for those increases. The main one in my mind is to stay competitive. I would like to point out that last bullet point, every year, the percentage increase includes the step in the COLA because some localities break that up, and they don't publicize they're doing a COLA. They'll say the increase is X percent, and they're really just talking about the step. And the way I've always tried to explain this, it's like Ragout. Everything is in there. We're not breaking it up and keeping one piece on another page or something. The initial, the staff members, again, that's about 1.8 million. The one that concerns me is that we're close to exceeding the standards of quality, and that's -- we have a specific funding source, at-risk money that John mentioned earlier, but the standards of quality, once you exceed that, some penalties kick in. You don't lose all the money in one big felled swoop, but they do put penalties on you. We've already added teachers this year, so part of the staffing you see in the 1.8 million, it includes four positions. I think that was three teachers in a pair, if I remember correctly, that we've already added. So, we have to cover them before we even add any additional staff. So, when we look at 19 positions, it's really 15 positions because four of them are already in there. Last thing is that health insurance, and I'll stay on top of trying to get a closer number, but again, that could be a little higher or lower. They're looking at our last 12 months of activity, especially the last quarter, and they're going to factor that in. And once I get the numbers, it should be in a week or two, then I'll make a revision to bring that closer in line to reality. Thank you.
So, here's what we're looking at. To remain competitive in our region and to abide by, apparently, the three budgets in Richmond right now all recommend or all include a 5% salary increase, though it's unclear to us at this point with the Senate, how the Senate is going to pay for that or what they're going to require of us over the biennium. When you look at our neighbor, Spotsylvania, is recommending a 5%, which over the biennium ends up being a 9% salary increase. So, for us to remain competitive, to address things like teacher morale and retention, we have recommended the 5% salary increase. We all know that there's a teacher shortage. We all know that to retain and attract quality candidates, especially the young people, the first thing they look at is the salary scale. Benefits are as important to them, but they will look at our salary scale and compare where we start with all of our neighbors. And we have actually lost ground over the last few years on the first few steps of our salary scale to where some of our neighbors, not including Spotsylvania and Stafford, pay more at the first three steps than we do. So, we lose quality people to them. We spend a lot of time in professional development. I would say that Fredericksburg does one of the best jobs of any school divisions I've ever seen in training our individuals, but that costs money. So, when they come and we train them and then we lose them, we have to start all over again. The additional staff members, frankly, we're playing catch-up, and I feel for the teachers that spoke to us tonight because we haven't been able to hire the teachers we need to put into classrooms to reduce those numbers. It's that simple. Every year, we have come forward, the principals have done a really good job of coming forward based on need, not want, for these positions, and every year, at the very end, we've had to cut positions that were truly needed due to the financial restrictions that we faced. If we do not add these new positions, then we're going to be in worse shape next year than we are this year. I can see... I can see over 100 classes at a high school having more than 26 students. I can see more teachers, rather than 14 or 15 teachers, who exceed the maximum amount of students. That could grow to 20 or 25 teachers. Those positions are desperately needed and we're out of compliance. So, those are issues that, that, and of course, health insurance increase every year. The one thing that, that I think Mr. Baker and I are pleased about is there's no increase in VRS this year. First time I can remember in 20 years that there has not been an increase in VRS. And I also will tell you that 22 years of a superintendent, this is the highest, the most increase I've ever recommended to a school board to ask from the local governing party. I don't see any way around it. I, I think that if we don't ask, I think that if people don't understand the challenges we have, I think not only are we not going to be able to train, attract people and retain them, I think that our classrooms will be, be very, very large. And, and I feel that with large classrooms come other issues. Some of the issues, a, a big issue obviously would be instruction. A teacher that has 30 kids in the classroom can't pay the, the individual attention to the needs of one that has 18 in the classroom. So, I think all of these things come to our priorities. I think the, the 5% increase for all staff, if we're going to get the state money, we've got to do that. The additional staff members to meet growth within the school division. I mean, if we add six classrooms to a school, won't we need teachers? We can't put the kids in there by themselves. Health insurance, everybody sees health insurance increases every year and we will continue to see that. We also have, are looking at trying to, to get a good projection of kindergarten students using the live birth rate in the 22401 ZIP code for the next five years. Beyond that, it's not worth anything so that we can better project kindergarten. We don't know that whether kindergarten this year at 351 was an anomaly or if it's a trend. It's too early to tell. So, looking forward, well, you also know that there are three budgets, like I said, there are three budgets in Richmond right now. We don't know which one we're going to end up with or what, what kind of consensus that they'll reach. So, we don't know what they're going to do in Richmond. You remember that, I was asked the question, what do we need from the city in future years? Well, to play catch-up, at that point, I said a million dollars a year. To play catch-up, it's going to be higher. This year, it's 2.1. How much will the CIP impact future operating budgets? Well, it's obviously, as we expand these buildings, because we're growing, we're going to need more staff. Will we continue to experience the growth? We've all seen the projections. It does look like that we're going to continue on an upward trend. However, every two years, we will, we will conduct another projection to see where we're going and where we'll see the bubbles coming through. A big question is, will we be able to remain competitive with salaries and benefits? What can we do to collaborate with our neighbors in terms of regional programs, shared career and technical education programs? And finally, the city manager and I have talked and will continue to talk about what are some services that we can share with the city that will save us both some money. So, members of the school board, if there are any questions, that is what we have for you tonight.
Are there any questions? It's a lot to take in, a lot to consider. Anyone have any questions?
If, if we end up having to, to put some of the health insurance costs back on our employees, then what does the actual raise look like?
You know, that depends on the tier they're on and, and what their salary is. But if you remember a couple of years back when we had to push part of the cost onto them, they're paying a low percentage of the cost for some of the plans. So, if you push more than 12% back on them, it's like a very long seesaw and the fulcrum is at one end. So, a small increase or decrease to us will mean a huge increase to some of them. And we ran the numbers before, Dr. Melton did a slide on that, and they were pretty alarming, some of them. So, the, you know, the people that aren't able to just wing it, you know, they're making enough money to cover $2,000, $3,000 a year, that's a, that's a huge problem for them. And, you know, if, if they're in a position to drive 10 or 15 or 20 minutes more, I think that's going to be an issue.
Right now, what we've planned in the budget is if there is a 12% increase, the school board's share would, would increase by 12%, but so would the employee's share by 12%. So, we're not passing the entire increase on to them. We're passing, each would pick up a 12% increase.
Staff as well as the school board? And we're not looking at any other policies or comparisons?
We do look at other policies and, and compare them.
Because 12% is a higher...
You know, one of the things you're going to have to decide if you go to another policy is not only the network, but the benefits, whether you have the same level of benefits or not.
No, I mean, insist on the same level of benefits, but it's, it's worth comparing only because, I just went through this and I was amazed at a lower rate. Sometimes it's the history that you have with your current carrier that causes those increases. And they may be willing to reduce that percentage once they know you are doing...
Typically, it's your med-loss ratio that the people bidding on will, will use. But our med-loss ratio is not a secret. So, if Cigna or Aetna or whoever bids, they're going to know what our med-loss ratio is. And in my experience in doing this for a long time, is somebody's going to come in and offer you a premium that's not as high, but in the second year, they jack it up by about 20% based on the med-loss ratio.
But then you bid it out again.
But then you're changing providers every year and you're, which you talk about teacher retention. Our, our teachers have told us they would prefer us to keep this plan because of the providers and, and the network.
Yeah, but at a 12% increase, you're recommending a 5% increase.
But, but don't confuse, the 12% increase to them may only be a couple of dollars a month, depending on the tier, right?
If they're on the, if they're on the second plan individual, it might be a small dollar amount. Or if they're on the HSA.
Okay. So, we're talking small dollar amount for the majority, then it's immaterial.
But we're showing you is our increase.
I understand, but we don't know the, again, we don't know the impact on staff because we don't know what their medical situations are. And all I'm saying is that if we are fortunate to offer a, a 5% increase and then the majority of that increase is being used for increase in healthcare costs, we haven't done anything in trying to keep retention here because I'm still packing up and moving on because of both situations now. It's just something to consider. Maybe worth doing a little bit more research on the impact the increase would have on staff.
I think we can do that same analysis this year, but if you look back, I think it was maybe two years ago, we did that analysis in great detail. And we actually broke out by, I think, an average teacher pay and how much it was. And so, once we have our rates, we can break out every one of the tiers and tell you exactly what the increase is on.
That would help, that would help us relax.
We may, we should have this mid, mid-March.
Yeah, I, I really expect, you know, we're putting as much pressure as we can. We have an outside broker that also looks at other plans and tries to find a better price for us if possible. So, I'm expecting in one to two weeks, we're going to have our numbers from, from the TLC.
And I'm not saying, you know, to go with lower benefits, keep the same benefits, but at least give us some thought that you've looked at it and this is the best we can do.
I have a question. I want to check my understanding. So, you mentioned that there's 10 teachers at JM and I think three at Walker Grant that are teaching additional classes. So, that, just for clarification, because of some of what we heard tonight, those are teachers that are getting a percentage, additional percentage of their salary because they've taken on additional sections and lost their planning period and so forth.
That's correct.
Is it accurate to say that, I'm sure it's not all of them, but that those teachers also could likely be teaching classes that they weren't already teaching? So, those extra classes could be, it may be in the same discipline, but it could be, like for example, if it's math, they could be teaching a different class.
Another way, another way they put it is it adds an additional prep most of the time.
Exactly.
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
And which is, is often very different than just adding, you know, five to 10 additional students to classes you're already teaching.
Completely different.
Okay.
Also, though, on that same, I was just, you know, if we have 13 teachers who are teaching an additional section and we have 14 teachers who are teaching over the DOE recommendations, we are, we are understaffed.
Exactly, exactly.
I mean, significantly understaffed. I mean, if you add those, that's not, yeah.
But those two, those two different categories have different, potentially different impacts to the budget, but both are critical indicators, right?
Right.
Okay.
I keep waiting for the good news.
No VRS.
Okay, no VRS.
Yeah.
I mean, that's about it.
Okay. Next, we have an update on the status of the pre-Labor Day opening.
I'm going to ask Ms. Holmes to help me on this, but I will, she and I were talking a little earlier tonight. There is a bill that's been introduced and that is moving through the legislature that would eliminate the Labor Day law and allow schools to start 14 calendar days prior to Labor Day as long as they give a four-day Labor Day weekend, which would, next year would have us starting, if the bill passed, about the 19th of August, which would not address the board's concern of having the first semester in by the winter break.
So, if that bill passes, does that eliminate the waivers?
It eliminates all new waivers, but anybody that has received the waiver would be grandfathered, which puts us in purgatory.
Right, right. Okay.
It also doesn't put our teachers on the same schedule as their students or our professional staff. It puts them closer. It's not three weeks, it's, you know...
Right.
It'd be like five days difference.
But it, but it, then we would come back from winter break and have a week of class before exam.
Come back from winter break and do exams pretty much.
I mean, yeah, that's, that's insanity. Like, I don't know.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. All right.
But our bill for the waiver has passed the House. We are waiting, crossover is on Wednesday. So, until it goes to the Senate side, we don't know when we would, when it would come up before the Senate.
Next item, additional information items, oh, business. The SBA Southwest Hot Topic Conference, and it's going to be held on March 13th. And with the bill this year, attendees will hear about the benefits of creating trauma-informed school systems as well as rural school challenges. A panel of healthcare professionals will discuss the opiate crisis. Attendees will also learn about the loan and grant programs that benefit Virginia schools and the impact of physical structures on education and how buildings matter. If anyone wishes to attend, please let Ms. Wright know. Board members are reminded that the VSB A Northeastern Regional Forum will be held in Manassas City on April 10th. And the next VSB A Hot Topic Conference will be held in Charlottesville on April 22nd. Attendees will hear about the importance of school safety, practical integration of technology, as well as a discussion on school network security and security risk management for school safety and insurance. Again, let Ms. Wright know if you're interested in going. Any comments, statements? Okay. Good of the order. Do we have any items for good of the order?
I do. I'd just like to thank all of the teachers in Fredericksburg and throughout the state that went to the Capitol last week and marched for more school funding. I appreciate their efforts. And Janice, I appreciate you going to the Capitol and also to the, to DC to lobby for education.
I, I worked hard. I saw all of our people and talked with them, you know, all, and everybody in Richmond, I talked to them about our waiver and our bill and about funding.
Great.
So, thank you.
All right, may I have a motion for adjournment?
Also, in line with the principals and school board members and clerks, let's just shout out to our school counselors.
Okay. Right. Cool. Wonderful.
School counselors. Absolutely.
All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Palmer, what, second by Ms. Holmes. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.